I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lake Forest High School Board of Education on Tuesday, January 14th, 2014. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblen.
Here.
Mr. Block.
Here.
Mr. Edson.
Here.
Mr. Bergner.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Mormon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We're all here. This is a point of clarification. We had originally scheduled a public hearing on the 2013-2014 school calendar and we've needed to postpone that until next month so that we can get more details into the agenda and make those public. So we will just move directly into our regular meeting. And I would start with a welcome back and Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a good holiday break. We've just been meeting in an executive session for the last couple of hours. No action was taken in that meeting. And so here we are. Last month, this board approved a contract, the execution of a contract with the Transformation Team. This is a group that is engaged to help facilitate the development of ours and District 67's mission, vision, and goals over the long term. I think since our December meeting, each of us has now been interviewed by Shawnee Harmon. Everybody enjoyed that experience, I hope. And we're all looking forward to having a group session sometime in early February. We'll continue to work on that initiative. In connection with that initiative, our board met last week with the District 67 Board and received a presentation on the status of current testing and assessment environment and were asked to begin thinking about how we might better measure and communicate our progress toward goal achievement. I thought it was a very good session and one that offered a lot of good information for us to start thinking about. Among that information was knowledge about the number of publications and different enterprises that exist out in the world that are already doing this type of assessment and providing publication of rankings of schools. And as we looked through those things, what we found was that each one of them has a slightly different focus. Each one of them offers slightly different results. All of them have some flaws. All of them have some good points. But at the end of the day, the end result is, it's all we really have. One of the things that really struck me about those various data points is that they all suggest that we're good, but we're probably not nearly as good as we could be. Maybe not even as good as we think we are. And they reflect the amount of opportunity that we have to grow as a district and as a school. So with that, it's exciting to work with Mike Superintendent Simic, Mr. Simic, as he adds new team members to his group and as he cultivates those who are and have been here for a while to develop building-wide enthusiasm for these initiatives. And that's probably best represented most recently by Principal Rogers' initiatives on the scheduling, which we'll hear about in just a little while. At the end of the day, I just want to communicate right now how much I'm looking forward to, both as a board member and as a parent, to the changes that are very clearly coming to this school and the opportunities that will present our kids and the way it will propel them into the world to deal with all the challenges and the changes that they're almost certainly going to face when they leave. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bergner. And I'd like to point out again how much time and effort our board members spend in meeting and the weight of responsibility that they have. And one of those responsibilities, it's also a privilege, is to determine as trustees of the community what direction our school district should take. And I'll be talking about that a little bit more in just a moment after Mr. Rogers lets us know about some things that are happening at the high school right now.
So the first thing I'd like to say, it is finals week. And usually I'm accompanied by at least one of our outstanding students. And we gave them a special reprieve, a special call from the governor. They said they could actually hold back this year, but they do send their regards and they'll be attending the next meeting. So students are working hard, activities, winter sports, winter clubs. We had an outstanding spaghetti dinner for our musical performances. It's been a little bit of a whirlwind, but it's been really a great experience. This is kind of the culminating point of the semester. And I know teachers, students, working hard and feeling good and looking forward to finishing up their finals into a long weekend coming up. So making great progress. I want to tell you a little bit about our new school day initiative, so if this would be a good time.
We've got --
Or would you like to reserve it?
We're going to do that as part of the reports, I think, in just a few moments.
Okay. So other than that, I just want to turn it over and move it on. We're just getting back to school and again, looking up to finishing a great semester.
Okay. Related to the new school day initiative that Mr. Rogers mentioned, one of the things that merits pointing out to the community and to our board is the incredible, I'd say incredible amount of work that Mr. Rogers has done, working with various groups. There have been a lot of, as he calls it, fingerprints on this plan already, working with department chairs, working with LFEA representatives, beginning conversations with the parents and soon with the community. And that community conversation can begin then effectively tonight. And there's been a tremendous amount of work to formulate the schedules, but then also to express their pros and cons and work people through the various benefits of the different types of schedules. So I really appreciate the smart and very hard work that you've done and have been doing. As Mr. Bergner mentioned, we have approved a project to create a long-term vision for the district. And part of that vision is reflecting on core values and beliefs of the community. It's important that parents, interested community members, and our faculty share their thoughts. And we'll be having a series of questions posted on our website to engage, begin engaging in that conversation. I'll be working with our staff and our community on this issue. I also like to invite anybody in our, or all members of our community, to read a book that our school board has already started reading. I was very pleased to hear one of our board members is already about a quarter of the way through it, and that is, Mr. Mormon, you have a copy of that, could you share? It's called "The Smartest Kids in the World" by Amanda Ripley. It's a New York Times bestseller. And it will serve as a springboard to a lot of conversations about what it is that we value and how we define success and then also how we would like to measure it. We're going to be buying numbers of books and going on a tour. We're going to head to our APT leaders, the Village of Lake Bluff, the City Council of Lake Forest, the District 65 Board, and our Spirit Board. I'm going to share copies of that with them to generate as much conversation inside and outside of the district as we possibly can about that. And any member of our community that would like to read that book, I would urge them to do likewise. I wanted to mention briefly some excitement that we had coming back from break. We had a two-day hiatus, which is very unusual for a high school district, but in ours in particular. My predecessor liked to say that he would call off school when pigs flew. And we had two pigs flying Monday and Tuesday. I want to discuss briefly some of the ways that those decisions are made. One of the things that occurred in this case was literally a countywide conversation among superintendents and decision-makers about what the weather conditions were going to be. We had predicted and then experienced 35 and 40-degree below zero wind chills. The buses are a primary area of concern, topic of concern. We had absolute assurances from our bus companies that the buses would run. And then we also had absolute assurance from them that they may or may not continue running, leaving students, it only takes one student to be out for about five minutes in that kind of wind chill for that student to get frostbite. And all of us were adolescents, I'll speak for the boys, I was, speak for myself on this, not very mindful of what kind of clothing I went out in when I was an adolescent headed to high school. As an indication of what those bus conditions were, the fuel gels, and actually on Wednesday, when it was significantly warmer than Monday and Tuesday, a number of districts had to cancel immediately before school, inconveniencing a large number of families and students, where students were expected to be at bus stops and were, and then the buses could not make it. So those decisions were countywide. In this case, every school in our region was closed. We will have to make up the days, and the makeup on those days is tentative at this point and not yet finalized. We will finalize those dates of how we're going to make that up after there's no longer a possibility of having more snow days. So with that, be happy to entertain. Any questions?
At what point will we be sure that we will have no more snow days? Before graduation.
I think June 15th will be safe.
Any questions? We're at that point then in our meeting for public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, now is your opportunity. Please use the podium and give your name and address. And try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Paul Hamon, 55-year resident of Lake Forest. I had a discussion with a 54-year-old teacher during Thanksgiving break who indicated that she would not even leave her job even if a corporation offered her a job at $1 million a year. Her calculation was that in six years, she would be 60-years-old and will retire with over $100,000 a year pension. So if she lives to 90, then 30 years times $100,000 per year equals $3 million. But with the cost of living increase of 3% plus an additional 3% each year, she would receive over $8.4 million plus medical benefits. Social Security and company matches in the private sector might approach $1 million over 30 years and not $8 million based on teacher pension benefits. Let us look at a teacher's salary. You work 30 years but receive checks for 60 years. Almost all teachers will be retiring with salaries at about $100,000 level. The real cost for the teacher is not $150,000, but $300,000 because they worked for 30 years and received checks for 60 years. So the real cost of a teacher is really about twice their salary. But it's not really $300,000 because they only work 39 weeks. In the private sector, they would have to put in a third more time each year. So the $300,000 equivalent salary means that the teacher is really being paid at a $400,000 per year rate plus medical benefits. So a salary equivalent of $400,000 a year puts a teacher in the top 1% of all wage earners in the United States, almost 10 times the average worker in America. What the public found amazing was that they actually went on strike because a $400,000 a year wage rate was not enough. Teachers' pensions are truly out of control. Let us assume that there's no inflation and all prices stay constant. She would receive more than $4.9 million during her 30 years of retirement. The last year, the teacher is 90-years-old, she would receive almost $600,000 per year. A person 54-years-old has a 5% chance of living to 100, so she would receive $16 million in pension benefits. The public has a much different perspective of teachers now, who would strike because $16 million in pension benefits is not enough. I have heard the excuse that teachers bring work home. Well, guess what? Successful engineers, accountants, lawyers, and doctors also bring work home. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any others who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and discussions. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Bergner. I'd like to ask Mr. Rogers to discuss the new school day that is recommended. It's not a change in the length of the school day, but a reconfiguration of it. And while he's getting set up there, I can briefly say that one of the things that is necessary for this to be approved is, because it is a change to the working conditions, the LFEA, the teacher union, the teachers have both a right and an opportunity to vote on that and has to be by a majority. And Mr. Rogers has been hard at work, working with the various teacher groups, department chairs, and departments themselves in working through a lot of detail on this. And so, Mr. Rogers, thank you very much for all the work you've done already and look forward to hearing more about the initiative.
Thank you, Superintendent Simic, and thank you for your support. Approximately six months ago, our leadership team came together and we started looking at things as we're starting a new era with the new administration. How are ways that we can help the school grow? What are things that we can do that can immediately impact students' lives? Part of this process, we looked at documents that our teachers had created. We worked with our teachers. We talked to our students. Our students had done a visioning piece, things that they would like to see in their ideal school. We examined the board goals, and we came up with our own goals. And one of the key goals we saw was re-envisioning the school day, making possible some of these things that students, teachers, administrators would like to see in the new school day. And so one of the first questions might be, why? We're a successful organization, a successful school. In fact, I would say we're a great school in most aspects. But this is what great schools and great organizations do. They look for areas of growth. They look for ways to improve. So as we looked at this, we looked at our school day schedule. And our school day schedule, in some ways, it is common. It's been a schedule that's been around for about 100 years, dates back to the industrial age. And so many schools have moved beyond the traditional eight-period day. And so we know that the workplace has changed. We know that what students are expected to do. We know about how and why students learn has changed and has evolved. And so we thought it deserved consideration to ask the question, are there ways that we can arrange our school day? Are there arrangements we can structure school to better serve the purpose of what school should be for our students in high school and beyond? So the idea is form follows function. Is our current school day set up to best support inquiry, investigation, to support the balance and wellness that is so important in students' lives? Over the past few years, there's been a lot of discussion about the race to nowhere, students not having enough balance in their lives, students getting up early in the morning, going late into the night with rarely a break for themselves, rarely a time to think, and rarely that time for self-discovery. And so a part of our mission holds, knowing thyself. And so when are students having that opportunity? When are students having that opportunity to engage perhaps beyond the classroom and really find their passion? So as part of this process, we thought it was critical to identify attributes we'd like to see in that ideal school. And again, pulling from the work of our students, our teachers, and our administrators, we came up with some key attributes or key goals. One of the things we said, are we supporting the best practices of state-of-the-art teaching, what teaching looks like in 2014 and beyond? We asked ourselves, does this current schedule, are there other schedules that really support inquiry, relevance? One of the most important things that we know about school is motivation. If you think about anything that you've ever learned in your life, if you looked at anybody who's been successful, anybody who's hit that 10,000-hour mark to be a master at anything, it starts with inspiration. Do we create the best structure, again, for that to happen? Do we create structures where we can have multiple modes of instruction so that it's not just lecture, but provides for in-depth discussion, again, inquiry, experimentation, trial and error? Much of what we know about learning goes on from that process of trial and error. The third piece is collaboration. And organizations know this in the workplace. At this point, one of the best ways to get growth is collaboration. So we've moved people from beyond their cubicles. We've moved people from beyond isolation. And how do we do the same for our teachers and for our students? So how do we provide collaboration within the school day? And currently, right now, we have six days throughout the school year where teachers actually can collaborate for about an hour and a half. The last but not least, certainly on this slide and probably one that jumps to the forefront again, is that balance and wellness in students' lives. We heard some really impassioned pleas, and I think it's also important to point out that as part of this initiative, we've had students on our team working with us weekly since the beginning of school and developing these ideas. Moving forward, the teaching trade is changing rapidly. The field of using technology, I think a little over 20 years ago, I went through my training as an educator. I can tell you, the classroom looks extremely different. Even in the last few years, it changed. Think about the iPad being invented just a few years ago. So as technology comes in the classroom, as we learn more about what students are going to be expected to do as they get out into the workplace, the workplace looks very different. How are we helping our teachers prepare our students? And I think that's key. And it can't happen in these one-off sessions that happen once a semester at the end of the year where you have a talking head. It has to be part of their ongoing growth. Next, how do we find times to come together as a whole school? How do we build community? I think one of the important things and the strongest indicators of unique schools and unique organizations is culture. And how do we provide students to come together and provide that unique flexibility of students rather than saying, hey, student X, you're going to be in that particular desk for the rest of the year? Instead, the student can move beyond that desk, work on teams, do interesting projects, and perhaps even move beyond the traditional classroom. Think about our environmental science classes, going to Elawa Farm, doing in-depth studies for not just 50 minutes. When you think about it, just as a perfect example, try getting into a car, go to Elawa Farm, and get back in 50 minutes. It's not happening. So how do we provide those opportunities? You could think of other opportunities where you'd have extended learning, where you could bring in an opportunity where students could do role-playing, debate as United Nations. Do we provide those opportunities for students to come together? And last, certainly but not least, is how do we provide additional time for resource and tutoring? And not just for the student who's struggling or for special needs students, certainly those students, and certainly those students I think would have probably the most benefit in many ways, but for all students who need that additional tutoring. We think that there are better ways of doing it than our current system, and we're very excited about moving forward. So as part of this initiative, I do want to invite parents, community members, out to some meetings that we're going to be having. So on January 23rd, we'll have an in-depth opportunity to go over specific schedules. We have an afternoon meeting on the 23rd at 1:00 p.m., and we have an evening meeting on January 27th at 7:00 p.m. At the same time, I've already begun parent meetings that I've done with the different groups, the APT and the Foundation and so forth. If you have questions, we have a mailbox, newschoolday@lfschools.org. And by the end of this week, we'll also have a website which details all of this information, including a frequently asked question document and all the sample schedules. So I'd invite everyone to take a look at that, come out to the meetings, and we really appreciate your input on this important initiative. Sorry. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Rogers, I've heard parents ask about how long we should expect their kids to sit in one classroom and that this schedule may have them sitting for 90 minutes. Can you talk a little bit about not only the start-up and wind-down benefits of this, but also, because I've participated in some of your APT meetings, it's more than just changing the schedule.
Yes.
I mean, that's the wrapper for many other opportunities. Could you just speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah. It's a tremendous opportunity for teachers to adapt new teaching practices and do some teaching practices that they love to have done but maybe didn't have the opportunity. If you're in an extended learning opportunity and you were doing the correct professional development, which you plan on doing, students are going to experience a different type of learning environment. So it's certainly not going to be 90 minutes of the same lecture or doing the same thing. In fact, what we find in the research is that when you do extend the period, you're more likely to see multiple modes of instruction. So in the course of one period, you might have an opportunity to be exposed to a mini lecture from a teacher. You might be exposed to an interesting activity. And then probably most importantly, and this speaks to 21st-century skills, you'll now be asked to apply that knowledge. And we think that that's really one of the best benefits. Beyond that, here's an opportunity for students to get more individual help, for students to make sure that the teacher ensures the learning. Currently, and I should say currently, and this is not just Lake Forest, but the traditional role of the teacher has been a deliverer of instruction. And now, in this new type of schedule model, the teacher is ultimately responsible for teaching and learning. So the shift goes from deliverer of information to the person who ensures and enables learning.
Thanks. I have a question related to what the data shows. You referred to some research and some science behind this. What can you tell us about what actual experience of other schools that have gone through this kind of scheduling has done for the students' growth and learning? And how many schools have been adopting this kind of a schedule?
Sure. Pretty universally, you'll find that schools that have adopted some type of a block schedule or a hybrid schedule, which offers longer periods of time, pretty much universally, you'll find schools that have less stress and less pressure. As a consequence, you'll also see an uptick in student achievement, particularly when you see the schools that adopt the schedule and do the correct type of professional development behind it. You'll also see, there's something that you can't necessarily measure, but you'll hear a lot of anecdotal information, that that innovation index or that innovation quotient in some way seems to go up in places like this. And I think that's a really important 21st-century skill. There's other things that talk about less truancy. There's things that talk about less disruptions throughout the school, closer bonds with your teachers. So there's a lot of positive things from the social-emotional realm, but I think also in the academic realm as well.
You know, Mr. Rogers, I want to just take a quick minute and commend you and your staff for really putting together what I think is a very exciting opportunity, which really gets me more to the public comment piece. I think, you know, to steal a line from my father, why spoil a good story with a few facts? And I think we need to encourage ourselves to not necessarily, you know, listen to your next-door neighbor's sister-in-law who knows a teacher who used to work at so-and-so who said, you know, we have some great tools. And I think that's the biggest fallacy or the biggest mistake we all make sometimes is hearing a vignette or an anecdote about what we think the facts are, and it's really not that. I fell into that habit too, as I was learning more and more about this in terms of what I thought it was wasn't what it was at all. So, you know, those of you that are in the public, those of you that have the time, I think, please go to the right source to get the information because it's a pretty exciting opportunity, I think, for our kids. And I can't help but think back, if something like this were involved when I was in school, how much different it might have been in terms of being actively engaged in some of the subjects that you necessarily weren't all that excited about.
Thank you very much. And I would just kind of put an exclamation point on that. A lot of that information is yet third-hand from somebody. One of the important facts is I think that there are a number of high-performing schools. In fact, the top two schools in the state, and I think four of the top 10 schools in the state of Illinois have now adopted these types of schedules. So you'll see that there are other schools that certainly people pay $40,000 and $50,000 a year, private schools have moved to these more, I would say, progressive or enlightened models of delivering instruction. So that's important. And then in terms of finding some of that information, a great start again is going to be our website. And then please come out and listen to our own in-house experts talk about the schedule. And so as we go forward, I think it is very exciting. There's a lot of promise here, I think, for our students and also for our teachers to grow as professionals.
I think John makes a good point. A lot of people hear the phrase "block scheduling" and something comes to their mind instantly. They, you know, they know someone in a neighboring district who tried it, you know, they've They, you know, they know someone in a neighboring district who tried it, you know, they've have some kind of prior experience. But block scheduling isn't one thing. As we've all learned in listening to you in this process, your group started out with, I believe, as many as 10 different possible configurations for the school day, have narrowed it down to four now that are, that are under final consideration. And they're all very different. So anything we all might previously have thought we knew about block scheduling is not necessarily relevant. So the information you'll be presenting at these meetings is going to be very important. I also wanted to ask you one thing. The benefits of a longer class period are obvious in some classes, science classes with labs, a lot of discussion-focused classes like English and social studies. How does it affect electives? I could imagine in, you know, some of the fine arts classes, it gives students longer time, you know, to work on projects. But what about some of the other electives? Music, you know, just give us a little bit of your experience.
Right. One of the things that you do is, as you look at what, from an administrative standpoint, research standpoint, look about how time is used and how time is used efficiently. And currently, in classroom, many of those elective classrooms, your art class, your music classroom, the science electives that you take, there's a great deal of time that is spent for the students to just provide the setup, to get ready for the experiment, to get ready to get your instrument in place, to get everybody on the same page of music, if you will. The end of the class, as I've heard, and time spent in breaking that down. So we think that there's a lot of, a lot of benefits in terms of how you aggregate that time. And the same thing goes with the teacher planning time, you know, how that time, if the teacher really feels like they have 40 minutes of time to prep, are they really going to be able to explore a new type of a lesson? Are they really going to be able to dig a little bit deeper when they meet with a student? So I think some of the electives are, I think there's some great benefits. If you ask anybody that created a great piece of work, of art, were they able to do it? You know, did they have that moment of inspiration to do it in 40 minutes or 35 minutes or, you know, even 50 minutes? The longer time speaks well to that, and I think it speaks well, again, to deeper levels of inquiry, and I think the research supports it. There may be some electives that may be supported with a shorter period of time. In that case, we might want to adapt the schedule for those classes. But that remains to be seen. One of the ones that I think is easiest when you have, for instance, the beginning chorus. Beginning chorus, for those students, their voices may not be strong enough to sustain a 90-minute period, at least not until about this time of the year. Although I got to tell you, at the winter show, and I think a lot of them were there already, so I think they went on for about three hours. But on a regular basis, and they did fantastically. So there may be some classes where it's better suited to meet more frequently. One of the other things that I think that we're looking at some of these schedules, and you'll see this if you come to the meeting, is the schedules also provide other opportunities to get extra help, to get extra enrichment, which currently isn't available or available in a lesser extent in the current schedule. So I think that those things can be supported. So you could imagine someone who was taking an art elective and then was working on sculpture and just needed some extra time to go beyond and kind of finish the project. There's those opportunities that are provided, more flexible. And we know that, you know, as the students are faced with so many different challenges and so many different things that they're trying to balance, they want that flexibility. I should point out, unfortunately, again, Kate Wally, our student council president, was not able to make it today. She's been a part of this initiative, and I think she's been a real voice of wisdom and insight. And she talks about the fact that, how she really needs to triage her life. And sometimes, if she could have that flexibility to do that. And when the student vision piece was put together, actually last summer, prior to this whole thing, the number-one thing that they talked about is creative and flexible scheduling and helping to manage their lives.
Mr. Rogers, I just want to focus the public's attention on the fact that this train is moving down the track, and I think it has very broad support at the board level and the administration level, teaching level, and the student level. And I know we still are trying to finalize a decision with regard to options, but I wonder, I mean, I suggest it might be worth the 60 seconds or so to throw one option at your choice, we're considering four right now, up on the screen, just because we don't have things at the ready quite yet on the website, what have you, to just give people an example. You know, one of the things that's been discussed, you know, some people hear the word "block" or "modified block schedule" and think in terms of a staggered schedule where kids come in at seven, seven in the morning, the first shift works till 1:00 in the afternoon, and the second shift comes in at 1:00 and works till, so that's clearly not what we're talking about here. But I just think it would be helpful if you could throw something up there if you can, I understand, but just to give people the concept.
Sure. First thing I'd like to say, I think all the schedules show a great deal of promise and show a step forward for our school. But I'll show one that I think is getting particular steam right now within the leadership team and with a number of our teachers.
Thanks. Like I say, I just think it'll give the community something concrete to deal with.
Sure. So in this particular schedule, this is what we call a hybrid block. We have classes, the majority of classes meet on a block schedule, which means they meet at 90-minute periods, twice per week, one time per week. They would meet at 50 minutes, I'm sorry, at 40 minutes per week. The other thing is that there are certain classes, those ones in the middle, which you can see, which are considered split blocks. So you have split-block classes, and then you have full-block classes, and then you also have the single periods on Wednesday. One of the hallmarks of this particular schedule is at the end of each day, you'll see the last part of each day, it's for extended learning. And I think that's something that our teachers are very excited, our students are very excited. So during those periods, that could be used for resource and tutoring. It could also be used for enrichment activities, bringing in things like Scholastic Bowl and robotics, so on, so on, so forth. But also health and wellness, again, bringing back to that, that health and wellness piece. The other thing that the schedule offers, and you'll find in all of the schedules, is a late start on Wednesday. So it's a start that starts just after 9:00 every Wednesday, allowing for that common teacher planning time, common teacher professional development. I think that, every minute that you're going to invest in that, you're going to probably reap five to tenfold in terms of the value of the classroom experience that you're going to have in instructional delivery. But it also provides students with a little bit of that extra balance. So we know that teenagers are sleep-deprived. We know that sleep-deprived students often have higher levels of depression, they're less effective. So here's an opportunity to give students also a break if needed. I should also point out that regardless of the start time, the building is open for students to have access to the library and other resources within the building. And I think you'll find a lot of these similar, you know, you'll find a lot of these strong characteristics in the other schedule, but I think this schedule probably highlights them best.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers, could you, and I think maybe you addressed it with Nikki's question about the electives, but what about AP classes? Any unintended consequences there?
Sure. So in terms of AP classes, I think it's probably much of the same. One of the interesting things about AP, and I think our assistant superintendent Lauren Fagel mentioned, AP is changing a little bit of their tack. They're going into more in-depth and less of a march-through time in terms of the material that they're covering. So they're, you know, it only naturally speaks to having longer periods of time as they evolve as well. The one thing where it does really impact is with AP science. So currently, our AP science classes meet for an additional half a period. So we've allocated an additional half a period for those AP science classes. All of the schedules can accommodate that in some way. So other than that, I think there's no, really no impact.
Mr. Rogers, there's also a bit of good fortune in terms of timing of your arrival here with the end of the waiver.
Yeah.
Could you talk about what that waiver is and how that would impact freshman and sophomore schedules if we did not change the schedule?
Sure. I think the waiver adds an additional sense of immediacy to what we want to do here. And the waiver for physical education for freshmen and sophomore will no longer be available to Lake Forest High School. So in the past, freshman and sophomore athletes were entitled to a waiver from PE. This is not a Lake Forest policy, this is a state policy. All schools have to abide by this policy. And so this was kind of a safety valve, a release valve, for many of our students who are, again, on that race to nowhere. And so what we decided to do is say, this might be an opportunity. Here's where constraint can breed a little creativity and provide an opportunity. So instead of prevent, instead of providing that break in the day or that break in the week for the athlete, for the soccer player, for the football player, why don't we provide a break for all of our students? Because we find that all of our students are on this race to nowhere to one degree or another. So it's just as important for the student who's here until 10:00 working on the play, or the student who's in the band, or a student who's on the math team. So we've been, we found a way, I think, to address that, so that our students feel good about taking, you know, the most amount of classes they feel comfortable with, without having to take an additional study hall and thereby kind of detracting from their education, and feel balanced and feel supported throughout the school day. So again, here's an opportunity where we have something that could be a constraint and really could, I think, have us kind of go backwards and have us potentially offer less electives and have a less rich experience and less balance. By taking this and providing to all students, we might even take a step forward as far as our culture and our community and providing balance for our students.
You have one more question?
Mr. Rogers, if you wouldn't mind going back to the attributes for just a moment. There are two different slides on attributes. One of the things, you know, the second bullet up there is to enable inquiry, relevance, project-based, depth, multiple modes of instruction. One of the things I wanted to point out is, when you talk about taking students to Elway Farms and when you have extended learning for students, these aren't just things that you're saying, because when we visited, and Mr. Bergner and I visited, we saw those things actually in place at your former school. And so when you created these attributes, you're looking to establish a kind of learning that is more in-depth, that is more experiential for our students. Could you talk a little bit about how these attributes came to be? You mentioned before that the number-one thing that the students said last year, when they were brought together to talk about how do we improve our school, was that we needed creative and flexible scheduling was item number one. Could you talk about how that played into creating these attributes?
Sure, absolutely. Again, we looked at a lot of those primary documents, the student vision piece. I actually spent some time, I thought it was worthwhile to go back and look at some of those primary documents that the staff had created at the end of last year. And so each department had done a visioning piece and talked about what they'd like to be able to do, able to do in their ideal situation, or what they were doing currently but were feeling constrained. I think that's an important, also, point to mention, is that it's not as if these things don't happen at Lake Forest High School. We have a lot of these pockets of excellence. But are we creating the structures that best facilitate that? Are we making it easier, or is it more of a challenge under the existing schedule to do those things? So you would find these things, they would come out in many different ways as you read them. As we worked together with the department chairs, they started to brainstorm all the different possibilities were there. And it was really kind of a blue-sky thinking type of an activity, thinking like, what is possible? Again, imagine your ideal school. And I think one of the things we do, and many of us have parents, have kids that are either in elementary school and high school, envisioning, taking it to a personal level as well. I asked our teachers, you know, and our leadership team, as we were at Ragdale and retreat, I said, think of your ideal school. What is the school that you would want for your children? What are the things that you want to do? And what are the things that you know that have to be done if we're going to meet the needs of the 21st century? If our students are going to be true leaders in a 21st century? And so what they found is, yeah, our students are going to have to be problem solvers, right? It's not just enough about knowing the information, it's about applying the knowledge. Our students are going to have to use technology. Our students are going to have to think on their feet and have lots of different opportunities. And so, again, it kept on speaking the question, do we have the best possible structure to support it? Not whether or not do we do it, do we want to do it. I think a lot of our teachers are there in terms of philosophically, they want to do it. Also, the point that came through was like, wow, every single teacher said, the collaboration, because they heard about what a great thing Teacher X was doing, or what a great teacher thing Teacher Y was. Wow, I'd really like to learn more from that teacher. So in terms of our growth, you know, if we're going to harness that internal capacity, we have an incredible staff. You know, most of our staff has master's degrees and beyond, they're expert teaching. But that opportunity to share those practices really will be a force multiplier for us. And the last thing that's on that list I would talk about is differentiation. And that's this whole notion of making sure that every student is successful. So in those longer periods of time, you're more able, if you do it the right way, to ensure that students are learning before they leave the door. And so I think it was very powerful in terms of what is possible from a teaching and learning perspective, what's possible in terms of supporting students. The whole idea of the schedule jumped off the page.
Yeah, I know we don't want to drag this one forever, and it'll be an opportunity, maybe at the next meeting, for a detailed conversation, but I would like you and the public to know, from my own perspective, if you look at those attributes, if I had written them, I would have reversed the order.
Yeah, I should say, there are no particular order.
I know, I'm just pointing out, as someone who's been around now for quite a while and heard the signals that the community and the student body has sent us over the years, look at how the film The Race to Nowhere resonated with this community at all levels. Look at the work that organizations like LEED and Speak Up and Croya have done, the youth summits that we've held over the recent years in particular. Other things all scream out that the biggest concern that students and parents have in this community is the stress, the perceived pressure to succeed is overwhelming in some cases. And I think it's great that these models have, these schedule models have been demonstrated to provide benefits in learning and all the, and, you know, staff collaboration and these kinds of things. The major driver for me is, it's also been widely documented that they promote better balance, that they promote less stress in the lives of kids and their parents, and all those other things are icing on the cake.
Agreed.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, Mr. Mormon?
Yeah, I think as we wrap up, just a quick, the parent meetings, where are they going to be located?
Oh, they'll be located at Lake Forest High School in our auditorium.
That's it? Great. Thank you very much for this introduction to this topic in a more public way than we've probably seen to date. We've obviously been hearing about it for a while. And this topic has kind of all the hallmarks of the contentious issue of category. It affects all of the kids in the school, by extension, probably their families. It's change, it's kind of complex. When you look at that screen, I doubt people watching on TV are going to be able to see what was on the screen, but they'll get a chance. So it's important to have an understanding of why the attributes, what you're aiming at, and what the opportunities are that can come from it. And just sort of stepping off on, maybe on Mr. Powers' comments a little bit, we, human nature is to be long on opinion and short on knowledge sometimes. And January 23rd at 1:00 p.m., January 27th at 7:00 p.m. at East Campus in the auditorium, there's an opportunity for you to shift that around and gain the knowledge that you need to have an understanding of what this is all about and why it's, why it's important to our kids and to their experience in the school. So thanks.
Thank you.
Barry, before you take off, sorry, one last question. Because I know some people may perceive things like the flipped classroom and block schedule as a lot of new things, and they strike me as highly complimentary, but I wondered if you could speak just a little bit to that, because I've heard from some parents as well that they may not understand some of the rationale for a flipped classroom, and this may be perceived as additive to that. My take on it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's complimentary, but I'd like you to clarify if you could.
Yeah, I think it's complimentary, and in all fairness, it's probably complimentary, some of those strategies with flipped classroom, for those people that don't know, is that some of the work that you do, which would probably be best and done in the presence of an expert, in the presence of your teacher, those things, we make sure that we're done in the classroom. For instance, you know, securing new knowledge, taking on a brand-new task should be done, working on the difficult problems, you know, working on a difficult writing, that should be done in the presence of the expert. And other things where you're getting the background information, those are the things that should be happening beyond the classroom so that you can bring those helps and be prepared for those really intense learning experiences in the class. So I think they work well, probably in both systems, and the flipped classroom is a model that some of our teachers are piloting. But it's one strategy, and I think it's one of many different strategies. And I think the great thing about the block schedule is it offers that opportunity to basically use multiple strategies. And someone mentioned, like, my kid can't sit through 90 minutes of a class. The reality is, the kid can't sit through 17 minutes of a class, okay? The attention span of a teenager, I mean, it's been documented, somewhere between 13 and 16 minutes. And so it speaks to the fact that we have to be changing gears, we have to keep it engaging and relevant. Because also realize, that's not the only class they're going to, they're going to class all day. Now, I will tell you that the average attention span of a 46-year-old probably is worse, okay? is worse, okay? That's just personal experience. So, we've got to be cognizant of, of them and their particular points in development, and we've got to continue to engage them. So, it's a great opportunity to, to use the flipped classroom strategy, but also to bring in lots of new strategies, or strategies that we're already using and further develop them.
In my comments, I, I spoke only of the kids, and as I look out into the audience, I see a, a very important faculty member sitting there, and I, I don't want to give them short shrift, that this obviously has a, has a big impact on them too, and this is somebody who we had, Mr. Schreiber and I had the opportunity to spend a, a week traveling with and visiting schools in China where teachers were busy when they taught five classes a week. And, you know, not, not, not that we're trying to replicate a Chinese model, but the point is what we, what we hear a lot about is, is a hunger for that collaboration that, that you're talking about, the, the ability to, to plan better and interact with one another to just make everyone better. So, this is, this is kind of exciting. Thanks.
Thank you again.
And I apologize for the inside joke, but I, I'd like to congratulate you on a heck of a seven-minute presentation. Mr. Simic had given him a seven-minute timeframe for his presentation.
That's why the U.S. ranks 25th in math.
If it hadn't been for questions, perhaps it really would have been.
And I can tell you, the attention of a 49-year-old is a lot less than 60.
I'd be able to talk about the attention of a 49-year-old if I could remember that long ago.
Moving on, we are on to Board Committee reports. The Board of Education Committee, Mrs. Snoblin.
The Education Committee has not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting was, has been scheduled to be February 5th, but I would like to request a change in that because I'll be out of town. So, I'll talk to our Assistant Mrs. Fowler about it, and she'll, she'll get that rescheduled for us. It'll be an open meeting, so it'll be, it'll be open to the public once we have a date.
Thank you. Board Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Block.
We have a similar report. Thank you. I would like to take the opportunity to, to say that Mr. Albus, thank goodness, is back at work and looking good. For those who don't know, very difficult time with illness, but he's back, and with that, we will be scheduling additional Finance and Operations Committee meetings, hopefully one at the end of this month and, and one in February as well.
Great, thank you. Liaison reports, do we have any? No, nothing from Ed Redd. Nothing? I don't believe we've got any liaison reports. So, we move into action items, with the first item being acceptance of the 2013 audit.
Thank you, Mr. Burgener. I'd like to invite Jen Hermes to introduce our speaker for this evening.
I would be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Simic. Before the board tonight in an action item is the acceptance of the 2012-2013 audit. The board is required by state statute to engage in annual audit and also file all of the appropriate paperwork and reports as state prescribed. Tonight, we do have Betsy Allen, who represents the firm Miller Cooper, who the board does engage to conduct their audit. She will speak to the audit and the process, and then also answer any questions the board may have. Ms. Allen and her supervisor, Susan Jones, did attend, I believe it was the November 6th Finance Committee meeting, and did present a more thorough report at that time, and also allowed the Finance and Ops Committee to ask more detailed questions in and outside of the present, of the district administration. So, I, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Jen. Like gentlemen, it's Betsy Allen. I was a senior management, a senior manager on the engagement this year. As Jen has already said too, we're hired by the board each year to perform. The audit of the district is satisfied the requirement of the school code, as in every year we perform, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. Miller Cooper has been the audit firm on this engagement for, I believe, six years. We have, Miller Cooper has an institutional services group that specializes in school districts and governmental audits, and I've personally been auditing school districts for over 20 years. We, we do work with your staff throughout the entire year on answering questions they may have. We usually begin the actual audit phase in May, when we come out to the district to perform what we call our planning phase of the audit. At this time, we look at the controls of the district as, as a basis for performing, for designing our audit procedures that we use when we do the fieldwork of our audit. We then return to the district in approximately August to do the fieldwork portion of the audit, what we refer to as the fieldwork, and also prepare the financial statements and deliverables for the district. I do have to, do want to point out too, that the audit process always goes very smooth when we're out here, as the staff is always available to answer our questions and gather any information that we need on a very timely basis. And, and as you can see from when we release the reports, that, you know, being, them being available and answer questions in a timely manner lets us release our financial statements on their deliverables to the district and to present to the, present to the board in a timely manner. As Jennifer did say, we did meet with the Finance and Operation Committee in, in December to review the financial statements in a more detailed manner and answered any questions that they had at that time. But if anyone here has additional questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time. And I also want to remind you as a board, if you ever have any concerns or questions throughout the year, that you're more than welcome to contact me or Susan Jones anytime throughout the year.
Any questions?
You know, Betsy, I'd like to just jump in for a quick minute. I, I think you and Susan did a great job, and, and, you know, that obviously, Jen, between you and Allen and all the work and participation, this was my first year as part of this and being on the Finance and Operation Committee. I think you did a great job identifying specific examples and explaining why you would pull that sample, why you followed up on those items, and, and I, for one, being one of the newer members, had a very high degree of confidence that the report went very smoothly, as you've pointed out, and, and answered all our questions at that time. So, I wanted you to know how appreciative I was, and we continue to look forward to working with you with any of the follow-up issues that may, may surface. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just comment, as I think I mentioned at our last board meeting in December, we received a, a clean.
Yeah, yes, you received.
I think it's important for the public to know that.
They refer to it now as an unmodified opinion due to the clarity standard, used to be called an unqualified opinion. Yes, you receive an unmodified opinion now.
That's my opinion, of your opinion. And I just want the public to know that, and as Jen mentioned just a second ago, we, as the committee, did have the opportunity to meet with the auditors in private without any staff there, and there were no issues that were brought up on that time, during that time either, and I think it's important that the public know that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, can I have a motion for the acceptance of the 2013 audit, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education accept the 2013 audit as presented.
Second? Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Burgener?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion is carried.
Before you sit down, I just want to take you up to, to thank you for your patience. I'm sure that the scheduling discussion was riveting for you, but we appreciate your-
You know, I go to a lot of, I go to a lot of different board meetings, and you, you know, you learn a lot of different things, you know, watching some of the different presentations, and some of them are very interesting. I mean, I have kids in school too, that, you know, go to different schools, so sometimes it's very interesting, you learn a lot of different things. And then when you hear it later, when your school's doing it, you, you actually understand it.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can move on to the approval of Press Issue 83 Policy Update First Reading. Is that you, Mr. Simic?
We have reviewed the, the Press Issue 83. Some of these things were jointly discussed with 67, and I recommend the approval of the acceptances, the rejections, and the rewrites as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. We often use acronyms here that a lot of people outside this group don't understand. I had the, was it pleasure of serving on the Policy Committee for a while, and so I think I know what press is, but if you could just fill us in as to what that, what that means.
I have no idea. If, if you, if you know, I'd appreciate passing that on.
We, we don't have to decode the word press, but what, what basically-
I can chime in there if you want, Mike.
Yeah, somebody bail me out. I think I phoned a friend here.
The Illinois Association of School Boards, which we are a member, offers a service that provides standardized versions of school policies that, their main goal is to make sure that all of the state and federal legal requirements are met in those policies, and this press service is one which automatically updates policies to make sure they are up to date with changes that the legislature or Congress or the State Board of Education may pass. Over and above that, they make recommendations on, on issues which are not required by law, but which are widely considered to be good practice in K-12 education. It's up to each individual board, in this case, our high school board, to decide, you know, what we may, may, may not want to do over and above what's legally required, and we spend some time doing that, and I have a question about that when it's appropriate to, to raise it, but, but that's fundamentally what press is.
If I could just round that out by saying that within the Illinois Association of School Boards' policy system, they leave room for school boards to have their own individual policies that pertain to their district, and we do in fact have policies of our own that were not mandated by statute or given to us directly by IASB.
Thank you.
For those that like to know, all those education acronyms, it does stand for the Policy Reference Education Subscription Service, PRESS. So...
Thank you for that, Mrs. Hermes, and thank you, Mr. Edson, for the question. Are there any other questions or comments?
I, I do have a question about the policy regarding, and I don't, I can't seem to find a way to get to it quickly here in the electronic information, but the policy regarding employee drug, alcohol, tobacco issues, and I note that the recommendation from the Illinois Association of School Boards is that since the legal requirements don't directly require it to be against school policy for an employee to be under the influence of such substances, I, for one, board member, would at least like there to be a discussion before we drop that terminology.
We, we chose not to drop that terminology. We, we decided to keep it.
Oh. That wasn't reflected in the documents that I saw, but maybe I'm wrong?
It indicates update one was rejected, and the, the update one is that deletion of the words being under the influence of.
Okay, thank you.
So, those words were retained for the very reasons that you were, I think you were going-
I appreciate it, obviously didn't spend enough time with the summary.
We all felt the same way about our employees being under the influence of drugs and alcohol.
I'm glad to hear that.
If there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burgener, do we need to waive the first reading? And move to second reading to approve it?
Okay, so, the motion then is to waive the first reading? May I have such a motion, please?
I move that Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education waive the first reading of Press Issue 83 Policy Updates.
Second. Any further discussion?
Is that kind of like never mind? Is that what that is?
That's exactly what that is. There's no further than a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. And now, may I have a motion for the approval of the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Burgener, we do need a, a voice vote for that. We need an actual vote for them. Just a second.
May I have a roll call for the second reading, please?
I just want to hear my own voice.
That's lovely.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgener?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we move on to the approval of release of executive session minutes from June 2013 through November of 2013. Would anyone like to explain this?
I would be happy to explain it. We are required after every six months, or twice a year, to show the board the executive session minutes, and if the board accepts that they're okay to be released, then we release them. If there are any minutes that they do not want to release, they do not have to be released. Mr. Burgener did have an opportunity to block out.
I have reviewed them, and they were in the board packets, so others have also had a similar opportunity. If there are minutes from any of those executive sessions that anyone would like to retain, please advise. Otherwise, may I have a motion for the approval of the release of executive session minutes from June 2013 through November 2013?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the release of executive session minutes as presented.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Does this require a roll call?
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Burgener?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report. Have you anything to add?
I do not. I recommend its approval as presented. I do have one item of note here that is not on the agenda, but I want to make sure and mention it, that if we have not done so already, we will soon receive a letter from Dr. Henrickson announcing his selection as the new superintendent of Mundaline Elementary School District as their superintendent, and we applaud their fine choice and regret his departure in the month of May of this coming year, of this current year, as it is now.
Is there a motion for the approval of the Human Resources Report, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Sarah, second? Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgener?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. If there's any item that a board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion, please speak now. If not, the consent agenda includes approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for December 2013, minutes of a regular meeting on December 10th, 2013, minutes of a special board meeting, December 10th, 2013, minutes of a special board meeting on January 9th, 2014, and disposal of audio recordings from May 8th, 2012. Have a motion for the approval, please.
I move that the Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent, consent agenda items, including all the aforementioned.
Sarah, second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Burgener?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Foyer requests, there were none in the past month, and announcements, we only have one, and that is that on Tuesday, February 11th, 2014, the Board of Education will meet again here at 7:00 p.m. here at 7:00 PM, and just like to add that on January 23rd at 1:00 PM, and on January 27th at 7:00 PM, there will be meetings to talk about the new block schedule to provide everybody with the information they need to understand, the why and opportunities associated with those changes. That said, there's a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.